Good evening, everybody. It's 5:15. It's time to start our meeting of December 16th. Let's please rise from the platform.
............................................................
For attending this evening, the roll call will show that we have everyone here except Councilman Vern Dirks.
Who is under the mark?
He is definitely under the mark. So, uh... Okay, we'll move on to budget fiscal year 2026 outside agencies funding request, and this will be from the Chamber of Commerce and CCGP. And CCGP. CCGP, I guess, right?
I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead.
Guys, I felt like I was just here.
Okay, your name?
Ashley Shabel, Director at the Chamber. So, as you know, the Carroll City Council supported the Chamber's tourism marketing efforts for years. These dollars assist the Chamber in marketing Carroll across the state online at Iowa's welcome centers and several showcase events, including the state baseball tournament, which I'm sure we are all thrilled that Carroll will be hosting for the next four years at Merchants Park here. As in the past, the Chamber is asking for the city council's support for our tourism marketing campaign, which continues to encourage everyone to choose Carroll. Tourism is essential, as statewide reports show sixty-four percent of adults seriously consider moving to a place after they visit. Our incredible Chamber team works hard to showcase the best of Carroll and invite visitors to experience everything that our community has to offer. Through events like the Color Fun Run, Carroll Band Day, and the Carroll Court Classic Youth Basketball Tournament, we bring excitement and energy to our town. Last year, the Court Classic drew seventy teams. We're thrilled to already have twenty signed up for this February. We also host two fantastic golf tournaments and several retail events, including Jingle and Mingle and our Ridiculous Days. These events not only create memorable experience, but also draw visitors to Carroll, giving them a chance to explore our shops, our restaurants, and our attractions. These resources were additionally shared... Oh. Sorry, got off track there. Supporting these efforts with enhanced marketing is key to building the quality-of-life image we proudly showcase to our visitors, potential employees, and others. This year, our tourism marketing initiative included targeted digital ad campaigns alongside a commercial that we aired on cable networks across Iowa and social media platforms statewide. These efforts invited fans to experience Merchants Park and all that our community has to offer during the state baseball tournament. The Chamber collaborated with local hotels and the Iowa High School Athletic Association to ensure teams and fans had accommodations throughout the week-long tournament. The Carrollton Days Inn and Super Eight played host to many, including the Iowa high school staff and media, creating a welcoming experience for everyone who visited. These marketing and hospitality efforts are part of how we continue to attract new opportunities and showcase Carroll as a destination worth exploring. The Chamber also worked closely with local restaurants to encourage teams and fans to experience all that we have here. Dedicated volunteers personally hand out flyers during the tournament to promote our community and all that it offered. To make planning easier for visitors, we posted comprehensive hotel and restaurant lists on the Chamber's website state baseball page, which is also linked to the Iowa High School Athletic Association Tournament Central site. These resources were additionally shared on the Carroll State Baseball Facebook page, ensuring fans and teams had easy access to all the information that they needed. The hotel and restaurant flyers have also been used and are made available to others in our community who host events, including several youth tournaments. Our social media analytics show impressive engagement and reach during June and July, reflecting the enthusiasm of state baseball visitors as they prepare for their trip to Carroll. These efforts not only elevate the experience for our guests, but also strengthen Carroll's reputation as a welcoming and vibrant destination. A second digital campaign we did highlighted summertime fun in the Chamber's popular live and local events. We made an exciting location change to the Depot Park this year, and we're thrilled to see the event continue to grow. From June to September, families, friends, and neighbors came together to enjoy live music once a month, creating a vibrant community atmosphere. This November, the Chamber once again brought horse-drawn carriage rides to Carroll for the fourth consecutive year as part of our tourism marketing efforts and small-business Saturday promotions. It was a really, really cold day, but this cherished tradition featured and brought family, friends, and neighbors together. We had horse carriage rides from three to six p.m., and the carriage was full the entire time, adding a magical and festive touch to downtown Carroll. These events not only enhance the local shopping experience, but also underscore our commitment to fostering community connections and promoting Carroll as a place to visit year-round. The Chamber continues to coordinate tourism efforts with Travel Iowa and Western Iowa Tourism, ensuring visibility for Carroll on websites and social media outlets across the state. I attend, have the opportunity to attend the Western Iowa Tourism meetings each month and have the opportunity to share how our community is driving traffic through impactful programs and events. These collaborations help position Carroll as a vibrant and welcoming destination within our region. As you've seen, this year, we once again are requesting thirty-five thousand dollars from the city to support the Chamber's ongoing tourism marketing efforts. These funds allow us to build on our momentum, enhancing visibility for Carroll and fostering, foster a culture of collaboration within our community. Together, we're creating opportunities for growth, showcasing the best of Carroll, ensuring it remains a place where people want to visit, shop, and live. As we look to the new year, we're filled with some excitement about the potential that lies ahead for Carroll. One area of opportunity is the community branding conversations, where the Chamber looks forward to working with the city on marketing efforts that will shine a light and showcase everything that makes our community exceptional. We deeply value the partnership we share with the city. By working together, we can continue to promote our wonderful community and remind everyone why we all choose Carroll. Thank you. I will answer any questions that you guys might have.
So, I have a question. It's more of a request. After talking to businesses downtown, and a lot of time we do marketing campaigns and stuff like that, have we, can we come up with a way to try to get our local businesses involved in state baseball, whether it be move the farmer's market during state baseball, and they can have their little, you know, like brown shoes, I'll use them as an example. You could sit there and probably sell a hundred different insoles, which for a small business, you know what I mean? Or, I mean, I haven't talked to Top Loaf, but even if they know who's coming and they print out some sweat... That's what makes small businesses successful. Sometimes those small little things where if we can set up almost like, it's our property, so I assume. I understand food gets a little bit weird, sorry, Tom, but a lot of those businesses down there, I think, you know what I mean? And maybe even if we do a live and local down there that one, one time, so that it's incorporated, so that we can... I used to have big marketing budgets, and I learned a Marine with a pull-up bar staring at you saying, "Can you do this?"
Yep.
Is probably the best marketing tool that we ultimately have, and so it's good to have a person there with a point-of-sale of where, instead of, "Hey, drive down here, go here." You know, if there's a point-of-sale person, I think that that would benefit, one, our community, because it's something we could do together and turn it into like a festival or whatever.
Yep.
And two, build upon, obviously, the ROI that we're ultimately looking for, you know what I mean? And I'm very excited that we have state baseball. I'm probably more excited, and congratulations that way everyone was involved. I'm probably more excited than anyone. I live in the world of ROI's, right? And now we have, now let's utilize this time so that we can't, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Get the sales and stuff like that, and ultimately help our small businesses.
I will, I can share that we did, every year, we tried to come up with something different to incorporate during the state baseball tournament. Last summer, we did reach out to our retail and restaurant list. We have that list at the Chamber, and we put swag bags together, I guess I would call them, and we offered that to all of our businesses and all of our restaurants to put something in there. Browns, because you mentioned them. Dane did bring gift certificates down, in that we passed out each team, got, I think we put twenty-some of those in the bags. And we actually, as a committee, we meet those coaches and those teams when they get off the bus at Merchants Park. I work on the committee, so I'm sometimes one of them there, but we had a really good response from our businesses and our restaurants last year, so we put bags together. We had hats, gift certificates, anything that kind of represented our community, people could put in, and they went over really well. I know, like Waste of Grain, for example, did put their, they give the little drink tokens and stuff, you know? Those were something that they threw in for all the teams, so we try to do things like that and work with our businesses. Always welcome to share ideas, and if people have them...
If you need help, I'll use brown shoes. Of those good certificates that he gave out, how many returned to the store?
Um, I don't remember for sure.
Two.
What he said, was there two? Yeah, I know it, I know it didn't go over as well as he was hoping.
Where I think that we have to take a double profit, and I'm not, you guys are doing an amazing job.
Yeah.
It's all about making this better, right? We were talking about, we want to be better and better. This, I think, will assist us. And if you need me to help?
Yeah.
I, I can even help. I'll go down there and...
We're always welcome for ideas and things.
Businesses on why it's important to be out there and in the community and stuff like, you know what I mean?
Because there are some, like Dane, he, he gave it a shot, in that, "We're going to try this and see what we can do." He also already has some ideas for next summer, I know.
I've talked to a few of them, and they would be interested in going, you know what I mean, like that point-of-sale.
Yeah, and we had some people, like, we had bags put together, and after the tournament started, they heard about it, and we posted on social media, and they're like, "I wish I would have known about that." So I think just people, a lot of times paying attention to what's going on and the opportunities that are out there for them.
Ashley, what do you have for food vendors that are down there?
Um, nothing, no food vendors at the state tournament. The Booster Clubs are there, so the middle, central concessions that is there for, like, the high school games and stuff, and then the Booster Club trailers both come in for that day, but that's it.
And the Booster Club gets that money, then?
Yeah, both Booster Clubs get their money from their trailers.
Sometimes they're getting their fingers in there, getting their shirt too.
They allow both Booster Clubs to get their, their funds, but yeah.
You wanted a festival in Carroll. This is the perfect time where we can incorporate, you know what I mean?
You just have to coordinate with the, with Iowa High School Athletic Association to make sure they're okay with what we're...
Yes.
Chad is going to...
No, they're...
You have a comment?
Hope that wasn't important.
Uh, no, they're, actually, as long as it's not inside the stadium itself, that's reserved for their and Iowa sports networks.
That's the thing we have to be cautious about, is keep it outside of the premises of the baseball, and there's plenty of space over there.
Yeah, we can start out slow, and then maybe lead at the end of it, fireworks in four... You know what I mean, but it's getting our community out there for state baseball, and our businesses, most importantly, out there.
Yeah.
Being able to have a point-of-sale where they don't have to drive, you know what I mean?
Yep, and it's, it's really nice to know, I think, you know, and Chad, you're welcome to chime in, but like, to know that we have it for the next four years is really nice, because you can make some plans, you know, when you know it's coming back. I think we've done a really good job the last couple of years. Dave, you might remember the first year, we really struggled, like, feeding teams after the late games and stuff, and not having businesses open and stuff. That, I feel like, gets better every year, because, yeah, because we know and we've been able to make specific contacts, you know, like, okay, these two teams are playing, are you staying to eat in Carroll afterwards? Yes, we are. These are our numbers, and who wants to feed them? And this, the last couple of years especially, we've been able to work with specific restaurants on that, so kind of to say, like, tonight, you know, Tuesday night, these ones are open, Wednesday night, these ones are open, things like that, so I think we're getting better all the time. The longer you do it, the easier it gets, and the more you learn.
And then what do you need from us to make that happen? That's probably the most important question, like, what do we, you know what I mean?
I think just, just, you know, word of mouth that we're here to help, you know, how to find us.
Well, even the specific thing, is there anything that you need from us to make this specific thing happen so that there is representation of our business on location of where?
Can I get over?
Yeah, sure, you can.
Ashley, one last thing. I did not hear you mention, and maybe you did, but we've also hosted the, the base, the state baseball All-Star Series here.
We have, yep.
At least once, maybe twice. Did you, did you have that in your...
I, I didn't have that in there, but yeah, I think it's more like five times, maybe, that it's been here.
High School Baseball Coaches Association. Exactly, and that's also another feather in our cap, I think.
Yeah, and I know, I don't know if you want to touch on that, but we do have another baseball tournament coming this spring that, you know, Chad and I have already talked a little bit, and I'm welcome, you know, the opportunity to help with that, too, as far as hotels and restaurants and stuff for that this spring, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ashley.
I was just going to say, so Kimberly Teepin-Toller with Carroll County Growth Partnership in the Chamber. But to answer your question, Jason, what can you guys do? I think the first thing that we need to do, we do have a retail committee. I think we need to expand that to just retailers in general, and then have that conversation, you know, early on, at the first of the year, about how can we help partner with them, what would they like to do, what do they need from us, and from the city to help make that. I think talking to them and bringing them in early on that conversation, and then the other piece of that is, we are having a restaurant meeting in January to start this conversation. So the first part of that conversation will be Court Classics coming up right around the corner, then in February, so we want to make sure that we partner with them on how can we make sure our folks visiting and are here for that event know about them, what do they need from us, that kind of thing. But, again, starting that baseball conversation early is important.
My kids and wife love them. I hate them because it costs me too much money. But, you know, it's, they see, "Oh, I absolutely need that." Like, I mean, it's in that environment, you're just, you know, and so that's, I mean, I think it would help. If you need anything from me, please feel free to reach out, and I will do whatever I can, so.
Yep.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Go ahead. Thanks, Ashley. So as you can tell, I'll brag about Ashley a little bit, but she does a great job, and, you know, Chad and everybody on, on the team, I think, do a great job, and we're, we're fortunate to... It's exciting, it's exciting days to have that kind of commitment for baseball in Carroll. So I'm going to talk about Carroll County Growth Partnership a little bit, and just give you a very brief update, so that... So the Carroll County Growth Partnership, again, was happy to participate in projects in Carroll and around the county with our Facade and Jump Start Accelerator grants. These grants are funded by private investment dollars and board member dues. Since starting our program in 2023, CCGP has assisted twenty-four businesses with facade improvements and also starting up or expanding, with thirteen of those being in the city of Carroll. Another grant CCGP and the Chamber have been happy to assist with is the first-ever Catalyst of Grant awarded to the city of Carroll. This grant opportunity provided through Iowa Grants and Iowa Economic Development Authority was awarded to Five-O-Four Holdings LLC for exterior and interior renovations to the old J.C. Penney Building. The overall investment in the J.C. Penney Building far surpasses the state and city grant investment, and is resulting in three businesses being located downtown, along with this large vacant space being fully renovated in our central business district. CCGP has managed this grant from start to finish and has been the liaison for all communication with the state of Iowa and the city of Carroll. Erin and Laura have certainly been instrumental on the city side, for sure. CCGP conducts a BRE program, which is Business Retention and Expansion visits. These visits are intended to support the core businesses of our community and also reach out to newer businesses to see what their needs might be. Expansions is what we're hearing and not retractions, so that's always good news. An example of something that we learned in visiting one particular business in Carroll was that their manufacturing floor space is somewhat consumed, or at least partially consumed, with warehousing product. And that really needs to change for them to become more efficient, so they are looking for warehousing outside of that space and wanting to expand and use that entire floor space for manufacturing. During that visit, I visited them with them about ISU Serus Program. So that is the Center for Industrial Research and Service, and what they can provide for services is, as far as how to expand their, their manufacturing in a lean, efficient way, using all their floor space, and, and reach the potential, the greatest potential possible. So that's just an example of some of the conversations that take place during those visits. CCGP works diligently on things of adequacy that affect businesses and residents. An example of this would be while in Washington, D.C., visiting with our congressional delegation about USDA business programs and the loans, if they were to just go away, and the impact that that would have on rural business development. Part of those funds are wrapped up in other things that need to be settled in Washington, D.C., and there's question about whether some of those funds would be available, or those programs. Another item would be advocating for assistance for rural EMS programs and the costs associated with becoming an EMT. When a person wants to volunteer their time to be a vital part of the EMS team, the costs associated with that are clearly a roadblock. And that is something that's really important for us to work diligently on solving for our future rural EMS program. Our Hub 712 project has clocked many hours of consulting with businesses, owners, and potential business owners. Some of these conversations and work have led to business startups, expansions, and transitions, where we have assisted with business plans and financial projections, helping these businesses secure the funding that they need. Current activity, as I've ended my third year with CCGP and the Carroll Chamber, there is a definite uptick in potential businesses and projects for the city of Carroll and the county. Carroll and the county has exciting potential, and it's positioned to see growth. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the city of Carroll and the collaboration to do economic development together. I would say our path is brighter today than it was yesterday. As for myself and our staff, we will always work to keep Carroll as a place that is always open for business in collaboration with our mayor, our city manager, and you, our city council. I tried to make that as quick as possible. You have a packet. There is more information, if you want, beyond this packet that I can certainly give to you. I'd be happy to do so. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval minutes of the November twenty-fifth and December ninth, two thousand twenty-four meetings, approval of bills and claims, licenses and permits, which include renewal of Class C retail alcohol license for Curbs Bar and Grill, renewal of Class C retail alcohol license for Carrollton Inn, fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six budget schedule and council meeting dates for calendar year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five lease agreements with Carroll Community School District and Kemper Catholic School System, and appointments to committees, commissions, and boards at this time, including Brenda Ho, Wes Treadway, and Marsha Knuckles, all to the Library Board of Trustees. Are there any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Amen.
Second.
I'll go with Tom and Jason second. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ordaro?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to oral requests and communications for the audience. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda at this time? If you approach the podium, we'd be happy to welcome you. I took my glasses off to see this, so... All right, seeing that, we'll move on to ordinances, and the first ordinance, person-only ordinance is Rolling Hills South Fifth Edition, and Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. The Seven-O-Four Development Corporation has completed the public improvements in the Rolling Hills South Fifth Edition. Those included sanitary sewers, storm sewer, water main, and roadway paving on South Ridge Drive and West Ridge Drive. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of acceptance of the public improvements for future maintenance and care, and also adoption of the grade ordinance for South Ridge Drive and West Ridge Drive.
Any questions for Randy? All right, this would have to be in two motions, I believe, so the first outlook for is a motion to accept the public improvements presented for Rolling Hills South Fifth Edition.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, that was Tom. JJ, second. Roll call vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Ordaro?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, I'd look for a motion to adopt the grade ordinance for South Ridge Drive and West Ridge, West Ridge Drive in the addition.
First reading.
And this would be for the first reading only in particular, because we only have five council members here, so...
So moved.
That was Tom and Jason second. Roll call vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Ordaro?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to resolutions, wastewater treatment plant digester and VLR air piping improvements. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. On December tenth, proposals for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant digester and VLR air piping improvements were received. Five proposals were received. Blue Ribbon Builders submitted the lowest responsive, responsible proposal at two million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. The current estimated project cost, based on that low bid, is three, just over three point four million dollars. The fund, anticipated funding listed in your memorandum is, there is a correction to that, based on updated information on the availability of the ARPA funds. The amount of those funds available is actually nine hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, as opposed to the one point one million listed. That requires the bond amount to be increased to one million six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to finance the project. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of award of the contract for the wastewater treatment plant digester and VLR project to Blue Ribbon Builders at their bid price of two million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Any questions at all? For a motion to approve, Blue Ribbon Builders LLC at their bid price of two point nine nine seven million dollars.
You feel comfortable with this company, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Good question.
It's fair.
Second.
I didn't hear a motion. Okay, JJ votes, and Jason second. Roll call vote, please.
Ordaro?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. Nice, got an order again. Moving on to...
Southgate.
Southgate Road reconstruction, storm sewer, Southgate. We need to open a public hearing. It is five forty-one right now. We'll open a public hearing at five forty-one, and Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. On December sixth, the plan specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Southgate Road reconstruction were filed. The plans detail major storm sewer improvements, along with sanitary sewer and water service line replacements, and then full reconstruction of the pavement on portions of Southgate Road, South Main Street, and Southdale Drive. The specifications for the project are the statewide urban specifications, along with city supplemental and project-specific special provisions. Formal contract is the Suda sample form that we've used in the past. Estimated construction cost is three million four hundred twenty-four thousand twelve dollars. And based on that estimated cost at this time, the current estimated project, total project cost, is just over four million dollars. Funding for the project is anticipated at about four million dollars. Certainly, once the bids are received, that funding recommendation will be reviewed to cover the cost. Those bids are anticipated to be received January fourteenth, with consideration of award at your meeting on January twenty-seventh. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of adoption of the plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Southgate Road reconstruction project.
Just to verify, this was because of the soggy lawns, correct?
This was some low-point flooding in the Southdale Edition, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Any input from the public at all on this matter?
And has there been any damage this year? We got a lot of rain this year. Was there any damage done this year? We probably got more rain this year than we have, like, the last ten years, so was there any damage reported this year?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing when they get five forty-four p.m. And I would look for a motion then to adopt the plan specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Southgate Road reconstruction project. Is there a motion for that effect?
So moved.
Okay, Carolyn?
Second.
And second by Kyle. Roll call vote, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Bower?
Yes.
Atherton?
No.
Ordaro?
No.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion fails, three-two.
Right. Okay, so we will...
Let's see.
It's a resolution, and so it's...
Oh, it is, yep.
All right, so what would be the option to bring back? The date?
Yes, there could be a motion to reconsider at the next regularly scheduled meeting, so it could be brought back. The motion would have to be made by one of the members that voted against.
Okay.
Could it be done by Laverne, since he's not here?
No, because he didn't, he didn't vote, yeah.
Counsel spoken.
Randy, what would be the implications of... Randy, what would be the implications of this? Just so that the people who voted know, will understand what will happen if this doesn't go through. What could happen?
What could happen?
Right.
Well, there, primarily it's to solve a, a low point flooding problem on South Dale Drive. And, uh, certainly, uh, the, the Rolling Hills subdivision, uh, was developed in the 60s. And since that time, there's been a lot of, of development south of there in the, the, uh, Rolling Hills South subdivision as well as the South Dale subdivision. So much more runoff than was originally designed for in the, uh, Rolling Hills subdivision on South Gate Road. So, uh, continued low point flooding is likely to be the, the outcome of it.
Which to this point will, has not caused any damage and it's just low point flooding. This isn't massive flooding, correct?
Uh, no, it hasn't impacted homes at this point.
But that's the reason we want to put this in place so it doesn't get to that point?
Yes.
And how many, how, how many homes has it affected? How many is there down there that it affects?
Um, well, the, the project impacts about 23, uh, properties directly.
But the flooding part, how many have flooded?
There's probably maybe 10 of those.
And that flood would come from the middle raccoon down there, so?
No, no, this is, this is runoff from,
It's runoff from the extra concrete.
Yeah, south of, of this, uh, Rolling Hills subdivision. Um, all the development that's Rolling Hills South, uh, drains through this area down South Dale Drive, South Gate Road to the Raccoon River. So it's not necessarily river flooding, but it's flooding from runoff, uh, from the property.
So Randy, the runoff is convert from these three streets, but there, it's converging. And it, the infrastructure can't handle when it all comes. I remember you were mentioning somebody's property up at a higher point where it was converging or maybe I'm remembering wrong. Somebody it was flooding, uh, something to do with the driveway or something. Maybe you remember, you gave us an example away from the Rolling Hills Park. It really does affect Rolling Hills Park. And there are several, uh, daycare, there are two that I know of, daycare centers. And when there's floods, it, it impacts the park, it erodes things. It erodes over the trail. I'm on that trail a lot. It just, it's more than, um, you know, it, it, to me, it, it creates major problems for people that live, uh, contiguous to the park, that whole area from people talking to me because that is Ward Four. And, um, you know, they send me photos, et cetera. You've heard from me for years.
Sure. Uh, and this, this project, yeah, watershed that this project is located in is a, a portion of that drainage to Rolling Hills Park. You know, there's other suit, storm sewer outlets to that park also in other small watersheds.
Right.
This is one of those that, uh, drains to the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy, so you know where this water sits on South Dale Drive? I, I know there's a low point down there that I remember a bunch of water building up. If I'm a homeowner and my home is flooded out because of this, what right do I have to come? Do I have any right to come after the city since we know that there's a problem here?
There's been a home flooded out in this?
That I would defer to Dave as far as.
Just because I, I look at, you know, obviously like Spencer, some of that's not even comparable. But, you know, if I, if I live there, some of these homeowners live there, they don't have flood insurance and that's going to totally wreck whatever they have. So that would be my worry for the people that it could potentially flood their home. So.
Sure.
Are they in a flood plain?
They're not. So then you're not gonna have any flood insurance.
Right.
Would they offer flood insurance in a non-flood plain?
No, you can't buy flood insurance unless you're in a flood plain.
They'd be uninsured.
They'd be uninsured because the water would then.
I understand.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm just. I'm just saying, I'm just saying as a taxpayer, I would have a hard time paying storm sewer water runoff i- if my basement got flooded or my house got flooded because we know that there's a problem and we didn't do anything with it. That'd be my only worry. And if it's, you know, working class family.
Would you buy the home from the homeowner? Move them out? Just have it just bare land?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing things out there. I mean, it's a.
Well, you, you, you are doing something a little bit different than just changing the storm sewer. You're upgrading the street that's above the storm sewer. So we're improving this, the infrastructure of the city above it. It's our obligation to take care of the storm water that gets released onto the streets and, and get it back into the river. So th- those are infrastructure things that the city's supposed to be obligated to take care of.
Our other understanding is that, uh, all that development up there now, it's been fixed when we talked about it, that they're retaining their water, correct?
But they're not retaining it. They're putting it into the storm sewer system.
There's no, there's nothing in the deal about if you're developing land that you have to retain your, you go to any city and there's retaining ponds and everything else. You go to a feedlot, there's a retaining pond. Like, that's part of the develop, the development of an area is to retain that water. So they're not retaining any of that water up there?
No. No, Carroll doesn't have that requirement that you retain storm water on site. Only in one watershed, yeah, is that requirement.
Well, that's a bad deal.
All right. Thank you, Randy. All right. Moving on to, uh, reports. Adams Street Reconstruction Certificate of Substantial Completion and Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Rash Construction has completed the work on the Adams Street Project. Uh, the date of substantial completion was August 22nd of this year uh, compared to the contract date of completion at August 20th. The final construction cost of the project was $3,626,499.80. That's about just over $54,000 higher than the amended contract cost. Um, and that difference is due to the unit price contract. Uh, contractor certainly is paid for each unit of work that he completes. Um, unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of the waiver of the two days of liquidated damages and the acceptance of the certificate of completion for the Adams Street reconstruction project.
Questions?
Second.
All right. Uh, which one you said?
Tom, Jason.
Tom? Okay. Tom and Jason. Roll call vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ford Naro?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Ford Naro?
Yes.
All right. 2024 Goal Setting Report. Would you vote to accept? And Erin?
Thank you. Um, on November 24th, we met with, uh, Mark Jackson from Mark Jackson Consulting. Um, going through the process, the top priorities of the council were voted on as in order, continue to fund the $20,000 infill development lots, uh, purchase land for housing development, purchase land for business development, and then continue to fund downtown facade program. Uh, other priorities, uh, consider a year-round shelter at Northwest Park and then, uh, more aggressive on vacant and derelict buildings. Those are the, uh, priorities set force, forth in the, uh, strategic planning or goal-setting session. So I would recommend approval of the, uh, goal-setting report as presented.
Any questions or input about that?
Second.
All right. We'll go the same way again. Um, and then Jason. Roll call vote, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Ford Naro?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Uh, we need to set a public hearing date for the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget amendment number one.
Yes. So, uh, if, if everybody follows the process for the budgeting process, um, we set the budget over a year prior to our.
Six months prior to, six months prior to us going into the.
Yes. So a lot of things can happen from the time that we set the budget to the time that we start our budget process. The items included in this budget number, number one for fiscal year 25 are items that are carryover items or items that council taken action to complete during fiscal 25, carryover items for fiscal 24, excuse me. Um, I won't go through each one of them unless you have a specific question that I can answer. This is the time to set the public hearing for our next council meeting, but it's also the time, if you have any questions, to please ask them about the items that are being included for this budget amendment number one.
Questions on this? I'll look for a motion to, uh, set Monday, January 13th, 2025, the date for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Second.
And then we'll have Carolyn and Jason would be second. Roll call vote, please.
Power?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Ford Naro?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Many reports are available in our packet for everyone to read, uh, comments from the mayor. I, I will, uh, I have sent a letter congratulates to everybody about the baseball, Chad in particular. Sending a, I'm sending a letter to Boom, to the, to them thanking us. And I would encourage the, the, uh, members of the council to possibly do the same thing just to show how committed we are to keeping that here four years is a great commitment from them and, and it'll mean a lot for Carroll. So, that we getting a letter from me and maybe it'd be good if we all did.
Can you forward their?
Yeah.
Their information just on the email to us?
I'll get you the address.
I don't know if you can send an email to just us, maybe individually or whatever.
I can do that, but it's also, yeah, I will. I have, I have, in fact, I have a text message I can just send to you.
Okay.
Okay. No other comments for me tonight about, uh, from any of the council? From the city manager?
I don't have anything tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved. I'm stacking.
Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Ford Naro?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
We are adjourned.